Good evening everyone, I'm calling the meeting of the Antura school board to order. We have a tobacco policy in place, there's no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. Please rise for the pledge. District Clerk will you please call roll? Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morale?
Here.
Trustee Goodrich?
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the contract of the superintendent and the employment of particular individuals? Trustee Mitchell Morale, second, trustee Story. All in favor? That's unanimous. We should be back within sixty minutes for sure.
May I have a motion to exit executive session and return to public session? Uh, trustee Ramondo, second, trustee Story, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Trustee Mitre Morrell, did you vote?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to um amend our agenda so that the board may enter a brief retreat. May I have a second? Trustee Story, so I first and trustee Story seconded. Uh, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. So we will be the- a retreat is not um recognized under the open meetings law, so it's it's uh this is a conversation that the board is having about our board norms which does not fit into um executive session. It's a it's a training. On our board norms. Yeah, our our interactions, our our yeah, with our personal interactions as a school board. Okay, we'll be back.
All right, we are back from our retreat and we are moving on to item 3.01. Our welcome from Phoenisha Principal Liz Vallow. How about now? Excellent. So, welcome back to Phoenisha Elementary School. Tonight's welcome for me is bittersweet. As I celebrate our students and their accomplishments and share with you all of this building's hard work, as well as the growing list of things yet to come for the remainder of the school year. And wow, there's definitely a lot. This meeting marks another last in Phoenisha's, Phoenisha Elementary's history. Last, this is the last board meeting scheduled to be held here. While lasts can be sad, we are absolutely excited about what the future holds. So, what's been happening? It's been a whirlwind. Just prior to spring break, our PTA put on the book fair with The Golden Notebook. Phoenisha swag is flying out the door on a daily basis. In addition to our regular faculty meetings, Mr. Bono has welcomed Phoenisha staff to meet with him as well for those open conversations. We're all planning to work together as the transition gets closer and closer. Some recreational events have even happened for staff where we, our teachers set up a bowling event and our PTA had a skating event where lots of, all the other buildings were invited as well. So, with that, there's been a lot going on. Some of our most recent things, and actually I went a little bit too quick, but our variety show. We were treated to comedians and dancers, singers, gymnastics, and even a demonstration of Mai Tai boxing. It was a totally wonderful night for everybody. I wanted to give out a shout out to our performers though. They deserve so much credit. They were all so incredibly brave to get up on that stage and perform. This room was built. And our little performers stood up there proud and they did an amazing job. We also celebrated Read Across America, a nationwide celebration of reading, which is sponsored by the National Education Association, which happens each year in March, right around Dr. Seuss's birthday. And it was just so much fun. Adults read with students. Students read to adults. Students read together across grade levels. Many of our students picked out new books courtesy of grant money from the Phoenisha Library to read with their new reading buddies. So, that was a day full of fun. Lots of reading going on. Our second graders decided to take their writing unit on opinion writing to the next level. After reading their different books in the classroom and at home, our young writers crafted their written recommendations with details to support their proposed awards. Their recommendations represented a wide, wide range of tastes from mysteries, comedies, graphic novels. With a special thank you to Liz Potter again at the Phoenisha Library for always supporting our young learners and really gave them the red carpet treatment. As you can see, they had their sunglasses on, they had their rewards around their neck. It was a great day and families got to join their kiddos and take pictures on that red carpet. Our second grade scientists have been at it as part of their Pond Keepers project. The students in each of the second grade classrooms had their own mini pond ecosystems set up right in their classrooms. That was done with the Mohunk Preserve, one of their special programs. They came in and as you can see in the pictures, set up the tanks. The kids were fascinated every day of what they were seeing, like what little creature was, was winning out over the other little creatures. And the students took, took care of the tanks and studied the creatures during their two week visit, feeding them, observing them, creating questions and recording the behaviors. And you can see one of the pieces of artwork along with talking about tadpoles. Well, this slide speaks for itself. Our third grade music and chorus students performed last Tuesday night treating us to not only their songs, but a recorder performance as well as other instruments like the triangle, the xylophone, and even boom whackers, which was a new one for me, but it was lots of fun. Thank you to Mrs. Catalano for her hard work with our little ones, preparing them for their future musical lives. Transition activities. Wow, is there a lot of stuff going on. Mostly here, what's coming up most, most recently, we watched our garden shed travel down Route 28 to Bennett, where we're creating, our PTA is working on that new garden. There were signups, that's going to be worked on actually this weekend. We know that the, our students voted on their new playground and that build will be taking place the end of May, first weekend in June, the 31st and the first. And our students are going to be visiting Bennett that first week in June as well. All the different grade levels, kindergarten on Monday, third grade on Tuesday, first and second on Wednesday and Thursday. So, those things are all laid out. And I don't think, in addition to that, I've also been doing a newsletter, which I don't think I can do the link here, but that's been going out once a month now and a will for the remainder of the year. Sharing with parents all of these things and trying just to keep everybody informed of all of these things going on, because there's a lot. I kept my staff development piece there because our teachers continue to work throughout the school year. Reading, math, our social emotional learning, but I'm also thinking that, not thinking, many of these things are starting to wrap up for the school year. We had Marika here from Morningside working here today and that'll, that's the last day scheduled for the school year. We've got some last of some of our math trainings taking place with David Trancher from Bosse's and some TC from our literacy trainings will be coming up next week as we look to wrap up the school year. So many things ahead. We have report cards coming home this Friday. We'll be doing grade level meetings here probably for, for one of the last times the school year, looking at how our kids are doing across all of the grade levels. The barn dance, Earth Day. Our third grade students finished their ELA state assessments last week. They did a great job and math will be coming up in May. We're going to have the dance residency here with a final performance in the beginning of May. We've got field trips to Brunel Park for second grade. Yes, I needed a second slide. Invention Convention Expo, kids are working on those. Notebooks are coming in this week. First grade will be going to Forsyth Park. We're going to have our after school program throughout May with the Phoenisha Playhouse Theater and that will culminate, it's an after school program. Some of our students will be able to perform and we will take a trip to see their performance at the Phoenisha Playhouse. We'll have our art show on the 17th, budget vote, you guys know all about that. And of course, our Phoenisha farewell. And of course, our Phoenisha Farewell Fair. So there, there's so much and I know there's going to be other things added to that list, but for now, that's where we stand. And with that, are there any questions for me?
Thank you so much, Liz.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks.
All right, we are on to item four point zero one. Our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Stephanie Laffin will present the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six professional learning plan.
Good evening, everyone. So our professional learning plan is something that we work on as a committee every year, every two years. And I just want to start out by thanking our members of the committee. As you can see on the plan, we had seven members of our administration cabinet, ten faculty representing all of our schools, parent representative and a member of higher education. Dr. Robyn Jacobowitz is our, a faculty member at SUNY New Paul. She is our, supports us in that role and we really appreciate her time with that. So the purpose of the plan, NICE it requires us to have one, is to improve the quality of teaching and learning by ensuring that when teachers and leaders participate in substantial professional learning, they have opportunities for professional growth, they remain current with their profession, and they meet the learning needs of our students. And the plan really is an articulation on how we as a district are planning to do that. It talks about our opportunities, it talks about our focus, the alignment of how, what we offer to our goals and to state standards and also how we measure how well we did in that way. So those things are laid forth by the state that, that we need to comment on, that we need to articulate. So the committee revises and resubmits to the Board of Ed and NICE it every two years to ensure that the document reflects the current needs of our students and staff. So primarily, the document describes our areas of focus for professional learning and the process we use to determine those. The requirements for C T L E hours, which are continuing teacher and leader education requirements and the process by which we award those credits as a district and the details of our mentoring plan, how we support the district, how we support our new teachers in the mentoring process and our goals. It is a pretty thorough document and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. This is going to be part of the consent agenda at our next board meeting. So anyone have any, any questions?
Any questions at this time or do you want to take a little more time to review the plan? And if you have questions, we can, we can take questions also at the next meeting before we. Oh, Trustee Lynch.
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm just curious, it is quite thorough, but I'm just wondering, is there anything that, to you that stands out as potentially different than what we've been doing in the past or additive in a, in a different kind of way responding to our current context and some of the challenges we see?
So there was a really large revision to this document that I led our committee through the last time we did it. So there were substantial changes, the prior version. But this time, we just tweaked a few goals to really focus on our kind of refined reading goals and some of our professional learning in that area. I would say that's one of the most substantial additions and really added some language around measuring students' growth in our MTSS goals with branching minds and some of the work that we're doing in, in that manner. So again, we just kind of go through all of these as the committee and reflect is this, one of the things I really want to make sure the committee supports is this, is this an accurate reflection of what's happening? Because I'm, it's really important that it, that, that it is not only a goal, but that this is happening, it is accurate and that our teachers and principals feel it is a realistic reflection.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Goodrich?
So I read through, or I skimmed through some of the document. Obviously, I want to go back and take a look at some more. Lot of good links in there, so a lot of, lot of information. I just did a scan for the word COVID and it came up nothing. So I was wondering if, is, obviously, there's probably things you're doing in there because of COVID that maybe without mentioning the word. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, it's funny, I actually took out a lot of the references to COVID that we had in the prior time as far as closing gaps because, and the reason that I did that and we talked about doing that, you know, there, there certainly are some gaps that, learning gaps and, and growth necessary that is, you know, related to COVID. But I think it's really important that we kind of shift our mind frame and really look forward and try to think about, no, no matter what presents us, no matter what our students go through, how we're going to regularly equip ourselves to support their needs. So that was an intentional edit on my part.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Thank you for that introduction to the plan. All right, we are on to item five point zero one, acceptance of minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the April ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second. Trustee Jerome? Any questions or comments about the minutes? All right, we will vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, great. That's unanimous. Thanks, everybody. And on to Superintendent District News.
Good evening. So we have the great pleasure of being able to announce that Gail Borden, who is a school bus driver who has driven the students of Antiora Central School District for over forty-five years, has been chosen as the School Bus Driver of the Year for Ulster County. So this award will be presented on April twenty-fifth at eleven AM during the Operation Safe Stop at Ulster, at the Ulster County Sheriff's Office. So I'm not going to share all of the information that led to her being nominated to this award because I don't want to preempt the actual ceremony, but I will say that she is really extraordinary. She has a long, incredible history of supporting our students and we are really thrilled to be a part of honoring her. And I'm sure that we will see more coverage on that in the press and on our social media when it happens. So I just wanted to bring up that I have been, I think I mentioned this, this at our last meeting. I've been in communication with some individuals from the town of Xena. Is it a town? No, the Hamlet, Hamlet of Xena, to explain the process that exists in education law for the transfer of property from one district to another. The process is very specific and in this case, they are hoping to have property transferred out of the Kingston District and into Antiora, which that process is driven very specifically because Kingston is a small city school district. So for any property to be moved from a small city school district to a neighboring central school district, that small city school district needs to take the initiative. We as a district cannot initiate that process. And we have also been advised that this topic is not a permissible topic for something like a ballot referendum. Some more exciting news, as we have announced already, we are working with Sharon Lipowski, who is a community member and parent, to focus on co-creating a central campus. So we have set dates for our meetings. We will have two separate types of meetings. We will have sharing sessions and we will have community forums. There will be two of each type of meeting to try and make these meetings more accessible to as many people as possible. So we will have sharing sessions on May ninth and May thirteenth. The May ninth session will be in person in our middle high school. The May thirteenth session will be virtual. We will be creating communication tools to get the word out and we'll send them out shortly. We will be asking for RSVPs for each session. For the in-person sessions, we're just going to need to know the number of participants so that we can set up the room appropriately. And obviously, for the virtual, we're going to have to send out a link. The community forum sessions are going to be on June eleventh and June thirteenth and they will both be in person. And so just to better understand the difference, the sharing sessions are to spend some time on individual wishes and worries about the transition process of moving to a central campus. The community forums are going to be designed to really imagine what a central campus might look like. So they are two very different conversations, but in our discussions and planning with Ms. Lipowski, we really arrived at the decision that both types of conversations were important. I would anticipate that individuals who want to participate in this process may want to attend one of the May sessions and one of the June sessions. And just as a point of clarifications, we are asking for RSVPs. We are not necessarily limiting it. If we get more than can be safely accommodated by fire code in our cafeteria, we may have an issue, but until we get to that point, we have no intention of limiting participation. We received official approval last week from the New York State Education Department approving the changes that we are embarking on, starting in July. So they have approved the closure of Phoenisha, the new middle school configuration to contain grades six through eight, the new Bennett configuration of a K through five building for next year and the new Woodstock configuration of a K through four building for next year. So that's good to know. On New York State budget news, the governor announced Monday night that she has a conceptual agreement with legislative leaders on key priorities for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The New York State budget that includes fully funding the homeless hold harmless, homeless hold harmless provision for foundation aid for the next school year also includes commissioning a Rockefeller Institute study to examine the foundation aid formula to prepare districts for changes the following year. The governor is quoted as saying, "Other elements of foundation aid need a closer assessment, so the legislature and I have agreed on a plan that makes long overdue adjustments to the funding formula in next year's budget. This includes the hold harmless provision, which ensures up to now that school districts never receive less funding than the year before, regardless of population loss, their need, or the size of their surpluses." End quote. So essentially, we have been given a one-year reprieve hypothetically. It's not in actual, it's not, it's not actually been approved yet, but we are being given a one-year reprieve in terms of loss of foundation aid funding. But the message being sent is that this is just that, a one-year reprieve. If the formula were to be implemented currently, it would illustrate that with our enrollment decline, we are overfunded by a total of six million dollars. The governor's budget proposal this year called for half of that amount to be removed from our state aid this year and half the following year. We will be anxiously awaiting the news of how the aid will be, be reduced in the coming years and how quickly it will be implemented. I know that we have advocated for a gradual reduction over time so that it is not drastic and it does not harm our students or our programs. This is the town budget presentation season and the first of our town budget presentations will be at the town of Hurley this week on Thursday. We had a scheduling issues with them. They moved their meeting a couple of times, but it has landed on Thursday of this week. The meeting will begin at six PM and we have been told that we will be placed early in the agenda, which we very much appreciate. Although our district is a small portion of the town of Hurley, we do appreciate the willingness of the Hurley Town Board to allow us to bring the information related to our budget to their meeting and for their residents. Anybody who had the opportunity, I know a number of board members did, to see the musical this weekend, this past weekend, The School of Rock. It was absolutely incredible. I was amazed not only at the talent and the skills, but also at the endurance. It was a really long production and these kids gave a hundred and ten percent for the entire time. And I, I don't know if I'm getting more senior, but I can't imagine actually remembering all of those lines for all of that time. But it was really incredible. I, I cannot say it enough. There, we are now in the season of all things wonderful and celebrations. I believe the Woodstock concert is tomorrow night. And so please check the website calendars for each of the buildings so that we don't miss things. But there are so many wonderful things happening. I know we have the Bennett Garden Build happening this coming weekend. There is a signup form online. They are very kindly putting it in, I believe, two hour volunteer chunks, which is very manageable. We will obviously have our playground, or yes, our Playground Edition Build at the end of May, the beginning of June. We'll get an RSVP up there for that soon as well. And I just wanted to mention, I think there are flyers in the back. There is going to be a Shandaken workforce housing meetup on Thursday, April twenty-fifth at the Shandaken Inn. So people who are interested in workforce housing and basically housing in general in the Shandaken area, anyone who wants to check that out, there are flyers here.
Questions for the superintendent? Okay, yeah, Trustee Lynch?
Thank you. It, it may be very premature, but given what we've been through in our advocacy around the state budget, I was just wondering, do you know through your, your various involvement at various levels, if there's opportunity to help inform the Rockefeller Institute's plans around the formula and what they're looking at? Just curious, because I know you've been, you've had the opportunity to connect with, you know, various legislators and the commissioner and others through different organizations. And I'm just curious if that's been discussed at all, how the Rockefeller Institute will get that detail and put together that?
There has been absolutely no discussion. I think until the actual state budget is set, they won't be there yet, but I will certainly be more than willing to make any kind of contributions that I can because I think it's incredibly important that even if, even if we want to recognize that we may be overfunded, the negative impacts that it would have on us to remove that funding immediately is just really unacceptable. I think there needs to be a plan and a gradual reduction and I will definitely advocate for that in any way that I can.
Thank you. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I'm just curious, is the, in other consolidations, were they, did they do those like sharing groups? Like how did you guys know that was the move? Was it Sharon's idea or is that just usually how it's done? Just curious.
We've not, we've not done this before. I can't say that I know that other schools have done that. I know that when Kingston closed a number of their elementary buildings, the board went to the buildings that were closing and had public comment, essentially an open public comment period, but that's all that I saw. But they may have done other things and I just wasn't aware. It was a number of years ago. This really was Sharon's suggestion. She felt that it was a really important step and we agreed with her.
Yeah, it, it is part of the resolution that we passed last May that, you know, we were going to engage the community. Any other questions or comments? All right, on to, uh, item seven... Oh, are you gonna do a website tour? Superintendent is gonna preview our website a little bit.
Wow. So I just thought it would be really, um, helpful if we spent a little bit of time at a few meetings looking at some of the information that's on our website that, um, the community and our parents might find helpful. So if you look at the Our District tab, um, I think some of the really interesting... There is a lot of information here, but some of the really interesting information, um, we have our code of conduct here. We have information for the Dignity for All Students Act that explains it, um, has contacts for each of our buildings. Um, our Dignity for All Students Act policy is here. Um, the form that is appropriate to that policy is also here. Um, so anyone who has a concern can come to this tab and read about the Dignity for All Students Act. And there's also a link for the New York State Education Department website and their information. Um, going back to the tab, um, oh, I wish I could see this whole... This is directions to each of the building, although I think everybody probably has GPS. But for anyone who doesn't, um, we have directions. We have a directory if you're looking up, uh, contact information. Um, all school districts are supposed to have all of their contract documents listed on their website. Um, some districts, uh, do, some districts you kinda have to search for it, and I believe that some actually don't. But we believe in transparency, so we do. We have a tab here for district forms. Um, and we have them organized by, uh, level, whether they are a district-wide form, a form that relates to the elementary buildings, a form that relates to the secondary buildings, or, um, some of our health services forms, which is a whole, a whole large department. The Parent Guide for Addressing School Concerns is also on the Our District tab. And this was created to help parents really kind of identify where to go if they have concerns. Really what we want people to know is, we appreciate if they, if a parent tries to address their concern at the lowest level and work their way up if they are not satisfied or the situation is not resolved. So if there is a, um, an issue that arises within your student's classroom, please speak to the person closest to the issue, which is usually the classroom teacher. Um, if the teacher is unable to, uh, resolve the concern, please go to the building administrator. Um, but again, any concerns related to bullying, you can also contact that building's DASSA or Dignity for All Students Act coordinator. Um, if the building administrator is unable to resolve the kern, uh, the concern, so sorry, you can contact Sharon Wood, who is shared, um, as my secretary as well as Assistant Superintendent Laffins. And she can then direct your call to the appropriate department or special, or central administration administrator, um, whether it be special education, food services, curriculum, transportation, the business office. Um, and then if that level is again unable to resolve your concern, then you can call Sharon Wood back and ask to speak with me, and I will absolutely speak with, um, parents who contact our office. If for some reason I am then unable to address the concern, then, um, the appropriate step is to reach out to the Board of Education. And to do that through the district clerk. Uh, and so we felt that having this guide is just sort of a helpful reminder of the most efficient way to address concerns. Um, as you know, we mail out district newsletters each year, and we have an archive of all of our district newsletters here on our webpage, going back to two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Um, it's often handy to go back and, um, look at these newsletters, uh, especially for things like budget questions um, and the things that were included in a budget and the initiatives that were being taken through a budget for each year. Um, our one-page calendar is here. The District Plans and Reports tab has an incredible amount of information. Um, the plans like the professional development plan that Ms. Laffin just went over. We have, um, physical education plan. We have our district-wide safety plans. We have our school counseling plan, shared decision-making plan, special education. Um, also, there is a section for reports. Um, you can look back at our external audit reports going back to two thousand ten, eleven here. Um, when we have had comptrollers audits, those reports are posted here. You can look at our enrollment reports monthly, um, going back here, uh, this page goes down monthly through June of two thousand nineteen. But then we also have our enrollment projections um, and each, uh, report of enrollment projections that we have here, going back to two thousand thirteen. Under this tab, we also have our building condition surveys for each of our buildings, um, each time they were done. Um, I think everybody has seen Dr. Bachman's Building Utilization and Grade Configuration Study appears uh, a couple of different places in our, uh, website, but that's here as well. And the transparency reports that, uh, were required to file, as well as the federal stimulus program reports. So just this, uh, section of the website alone has an incredible amount of information for people who are interested in, um, looking at that. Everybody wants to know about our district snow days. We do track them here on this Our District tab, uh, and mark the dates of when they were used. As we all know, we have one left. Um, the long-term planning page that was created last year is here, as well as our soaring to new heights, uh, optimizing Antioora is here as well. So I thought that was just, um, a little overview. Um, actually, I did wanna also show this tab over to the far-right, Community Resources, because this was something that we touched on at the last meeting. We have, um, a tab here for information on community donations. So anyone who is looking to make a donation can look at this page, and it lists, um, who to contact for each type of donation and at each level of the district, and includes information for the booster club as well as the PTAs. And then just a miscellaneous donation if someone is looking, um, to make a donation and doesn't have one of these other, um, groups in mind, if they're not looking to make a high school scholarship donation or a donation to the clubs. Um, and so I thought, I just wanna spend a little bit of time, um, at our meetings reviewing some of the information that's on the website, but I don't wanna spend a huge amount of time. So I thought that would be a, a brief walk.
Thank you for that. Any, any questions or comments about that overview of our website? Trustee Jerome?
I just wanna comment, it's a pantheon. I mean, it's just so well organized, and, um, I think it really shows the effort that we go to as a district for transparency. And I'm just always impressed at how tightly it's, it's put together.
All right, we will move on to, um, item number seven point zero one is our student representative report. But she is not here tonight, so we look forward to her report at our next meeting. Uh, item eight point zero one is board district news. Do any board members have information to share with our community? Trustee Ramondo?
So as board members, we are signed up to get all the flyers and things from NISBA. And I think this came in the mail maybe last week, the artificial intelligence workshop that we can attend if we so choose. It's May eighth. It's virtual. It's from eight thirty to eleven forty-five. And you just have to, um, email Amanda, and she can sign you up if you're interested in participating in that. So, um, they're great. You learn a lot on these things, and we try to come back and share it with one another when we can or send an overview. If they send us, um, slides, we can send it to the whole board. And I just encourage you when you can and when it fits into your schedule to try to do these every once in a while when they send them out because it's a way to gain knowledge in, in digestible chunks.
Thank you. Any other board district news? Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, I just wanted to elevate the, um, clothing swap that's happening on April twenty-seventh at the Olive Free Library. Um, it's open to everybody, and, um, you can bring clothes if, or shoes or anything of, for children or adults the whole week beforehand, um, to the library, and they can hold it for you if you can't be there on that day. Um, and anybody is free to come and take anything they need. You don't have to bring anything to take anything. There's always much more left over at the end. So, um, just wanted to bring visibility to that for our community.
Trustee Lynch, would you say the date again?
Yes, it's, uh, April twenty-seventh at the Olive Free Library, and it's from, uh, ten to three, I believe. It's on their website.
Trustee Jerome?
And it's just clothing, and you can drop it off pri- prior to that date?
That's right. Yep, clothing and shoes. Yep, thank you.
I will just add that, um, Trustee Ramondo and Superintendent and, um, our BOCES representative, Bob Curran, and I attended, uh, our quarterly BOCES meeting, um, which was held at Port Ewen at the Career and Tech Center, uh, last week. And this particular meeting is the annual meeting where, um, the BOCES superintendent presents their budget. And, uh, there are some, um, elections and, um, you know, approval of certain business items. But the main event is that we participate in a delicious, um, buffet, and it's all cer- it's prepared and served by our students and the students all, all across Ulster County that attend the culinary program. And there are students from, uh, other programs at BOCES who are there to help serve and just be lovely and engaged with us. Uh, one of the, for me, one of the highlights of the night is when, uh, students kind of talk about what they especially love about going to BOCES and the programs that are offered there, and it's really inspiring. Um, and it is just a really great night, and I encourage our trustees to, you know, to go if you can, uh, next year. It's really, really fabulous. Anything else? Okay, um, on to item number nine point zero one. The Board acknowledges publicly heard comments from our last meeting, and we heard from Phaedra Dagarmadjin. Oh, thank you, thank you. Woo. Um, anybody signed up for tonight? Okay, all right, and we'll move on to item eleven point zero one. Uh, and this is the vote for the BOCES twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. The Antioora Central School District Board of Education hereby approves the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Ulster County Board of Cooperative Extension Services Administrative Budget in the amount of seven million, one hundred forty thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars. May I have a first? Trustee Story? Second, Trustee Jerome? Any comments or questions? Trustee Jerome?
I just wanna take the opportunity to say that, uh, every chance I get, I herald and call out BOCES within our community that I, that I love, and I really think it makes our Ulster County exceptional, exceptional, and, and positions us for the future. So I'm very excited to vote on this tonight.
Great. Any other comments or questions? All right, we shall vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. On to item eleven point zero two. Uh, the Antioora Board of Education hereby casts their ballot for the following five candidates running unopposed for the Ulster County Board of Cooperative Services. Um, should we do this seat by seat? Okay. Uh, seat number one is for Highland Representative. It's a three-year term, July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. The candidate is Susan Gilmore of Highland. It may have a first? Uh, Trustee Ramondo, second, Trustee Story, uh, and we shall vote. Any questions or comments? We'll vote.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Um, we don't have to do a motion for each seat. It just has to be a unanimous yes.
Oh, okay.
Um, or at least we need, we need four, a quorum, um, and then we could go through to the next.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so, um, so all in favor of Susan Gilmore? Okay, I'm just, that was unanimous. All right, the second seat is for, from Antioora. It's a three-year term, July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And the candidate is Valerie Story from Glenford. All in favor? Okay, great. That's unanimous with the exception of Valerie, who's not voting for herself. Okay, uh, seat number three, Rondow Valley. It's a one-year, unexpired term, uh, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and the candidate is Lucy Van Sickle of Kingston, New York. All in favor? It's unanimous. Uh, the fourth seat is from Wallkill. It's a three-year turn, term, July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And the candidate is William Hect of Wallkill, New York. All in favor? It's unanimous. And the fifth seat is an at-large seat. Uh, it is a three-year term from July one through June thirtieth, twen- uh, July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and the candidate is Stephen Spicer of Ulster Park, New York. All in favor? And now we do an, an official vote. Okay, are there any questions or comments? Did we do a first and second? We did initially? Megan and Val, right, it was, yeah, um, Trustee Ramondo first, Trustee Story second. And we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, we have a break built into the schedule. Shall we take a five-minute break? Okay, we're gonna go on. We're gonna keep it moving. All right. Uh, item thirteen point zero one is the Consent Agenda. The Board hereby approves item numbers thirteen point zero two through thirteen point zero nine. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second, Trustee Goodrich. Are there any questions or comments? Trustee Story?
I have reviewed Schedule U, and it's all in order.
Great, thank you.
And this is my last Schedule U for nine years.
Wow, there we go. Thank you, Val. Um, we shall vote on the Consent Agenda. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
That's unanimous. On to item fourteen, fourteen point zero one, Approval of Contracts and Independent Contract Retainers. The Board hereby approves items, uh, item number fourteen point zero two. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second, Trustee Ramondo. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Hi.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. On to fifteen point zero one. We have a second reading and adoption of policy fif- fifty-three thirty, budget transfers. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy fifty-three thirty as written. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second, trustee Ramondo? Any comments or questions? Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. We have a second reading and adoption of policy fifty-three twenty-two, district-owned cellular phones, I'm assuming, right? Um, uh, the board hereby adopts policy fifty-three twenty-two as written. May I have a first? Trustee Jerome, second. Trustee Ramondo? Any comments? Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Item fifteen point zero three, second reading and adoption of policy fifty-five ten, fiscal accounting and reporting. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy fifty-five ten as written. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second trustee Story? Any comments? Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. And we have item fifteen point zero four, second reading and adoption of policy fifty-three twenty-one, use of credit cards. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy fifty-three twenty-one as written. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second, trustee Jerome? Any comments? Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Committee reports, have any committees met? No, we were just here last week. Okay. Alright, so moving on to item seventeen point zero one, old business. Does any, uh, anybody have any old business to discuss?
Lot of talking for me. Um, I have a little bit of old business. Um, one thing um that I just wanna bring up again, just because I did attend the, the musical, which was phenomenal, but I am concerned um about the sound system. Um, but I was there on Friday night and I don't know, I don't know how it was on Saturday or Sunday, but on Friday night, um, the mics were cutting out uh on, on occasion and um, and also there was, uh, there was a, a good bit of interference or like, like, what is it called? Reverb. And um, and you know, it was, it was distracting, it was just, I'm, you know, I mean, I can handle it at, as an audience member, but I felt that it was really distracting for the kids that were working so hard.
There was a little bit at the beginning on Saturday, but it cleared up pretty quickly, but I will inquire because uh I believe we just purchased the sound equipment last year, so. And I noticed we had actually three people at the soundboard on Saturday. I think it, I think it was a very complicated production, but I will certainly uh make the inquiry.
Thank you. Trustee Story?
On that, um, I wasn't able to attend the musical this weekend because I was sick. Um, but is there, I don't know if we can, but I was thinking this, this weekend as I was laying in bed recuperating from kidney stones, um, that I would love to have been able to watch, is, watch the musical. Is there a way that we can record it or is there something with um copyright laws that we can't? That's, for some reason, that sticks in my head, but if we could somehow record it, so people that can't, you know, be at the school to vi- to actually watch it, could see it. I don't know if that's a possibility for years, for next year or when we do musicals.
Yeah, we can ask, um, I don't know if it would be a, a copyri- copyright issue, um.
And for some reason, I think that's why we don't.
That might be.
Because we can, I wanna say.
Cause we probably only own the license for live performance, but I'll check.
Our winter concert was on YouTube for Woodstock Elementary, seems like the same idea.
I've seen concerts um on YouTube before, but I'd, I'm not sure about the, the uh, the copyright law for the um, the productions that, you know, somebody wrote and choreographed and all that.
They read the disclaimer, they read the disclaimer before the show on Saturday night that said there was no recording or live photos, so there's, there's something connected there.
Trustee Jerome?
It makes sense that the permissions, that, that there may have not been permissions for recording, but just curious in the future as you look to do these productions, because having it available to everybody is such an accessible, wonderful experience. Maybe to ask if there, what that would look like if we could get those permissions as well.
Great, and I, I have one other thing to bring up under old business. Um, I did uh bring some information uh to the last board meeting under new business about a, a diversity, um equity, inclusion and belonging resolution. And um, I'd like to um bring a draft to the next board meeting. I'll probably be using the Pleasantville Resolution, which I think was so well-done, um, as the basis of it. Um, really changing uh one section that was specific to Pleasantville that would, I, I'll try to craft it specific to Antiora, but I'll, I'll bring it um and um, uh, we'll add it as a discussion um topic on the agenda and then we can have a, a full conversation about it, kinda pick it apart or, you know, whatever we wanna do with it, um, or throw it out and start over. Um, I, I did um appreciate that um Amanda Gates did send us uh the resolution that was crafted and uh by uh former trustee DeJesus, um, which was really, I feel, more of an anti-racism statement and very strong, a very strong straight statement that was um from, I believe, t- uh twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty, that's right, September twenty twenty. And um, you know, but I think this one is more, um, not to use the word inclusive, you know, overly, but it's a more, a more inclusive um uh statement that, that I, I hope we can make as a board. Um, so that's for our next meeting. Any other old business? Any new business? Trustee Story?
At our last meeting, uh trustee Hemingway Lynch wanted to know like how we could support the students or how the board members could find out how we're supporting the students in the transition and there's really no mechanism for board members to do that. So as we're dri- as I was driving home, I was thinking, you know, this and past couple of days, you know, last week I've been thinking about it and I'm like, are, are, the only employee of the district or of the board is a superintendent, so I'm thinking, how can our superintendent be engaged with our students more or different things? And something popped up in a superintendent that I know from Long Island does a um, has a, a um superintendent council or quar- uh quorum? No, roundtable, superintendent roundtable that he goes in and speaks with the different uh grade levels of students and has dialogue with the students and then goes back and reports back to the board. So this is something if the superintendent McLaren would be interested into, something that she could do with her team, admin team and go into the district, go into the buildings and report back to the board of how our transition is going. Throw that one out there for you.
Any other new business? Any requests for information? Trustee Story would like to move to adjourn, may I have a second? Trustee Jerome, all in favor? That's unanimous. We'll see you on May seventh.